The skis have made a lot more fun to ski.
Ah, okay. Yeah, just coincidence.
Oh, yes.
Statement. There'll be a roll call vote and then we'll have nominations for chairman. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held on Wednesday, January 22, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey, Inc. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Claudia, would you do the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Mr. Valvani?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Thank you.
And now I would like to open nominations for chairman.
I would like to nominate Steve Cohen.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'll turn the meeting over now to Chairman Cohen.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we have some...
Well, you have to continue with nomination of vice chair on the reorg and then attorney and secretary.
Nomination of a vice chair?
I'll nominate Ms. Coulson.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Karen, we have a number of things that were in our packet that we've got to go through prior to the meeting this evening?
We still have to nominate the... Do you have an agenda?
Attorney and secretary.
Do you have your agenda?
Yes.
We need to nominate or appoint the attorney?
Okay.
And the secretary.
Okay. Now, how do you, not having nominated an attorney, we have... Do we ask for suggestions or how do we do this? I mean, what do you say?
I move.
You have a resolution in your package if you want to reappoint me, so you can move approval of that resolution.
Okay.
And then you also have a resolution in the packet for the appointment of Claudia to be the board secretary.
Yes, okay. All right, well, let's go through and follow the order in our agenda. We have a resolution approving Karen Casey as our attorney. If anybody's got a question on the resolution, please ask. If not, if somebody wants to make a motion of approval.
Well, I would move to nominate the law firm of Karen L. Casey LLC as legal counsel to the board as stated in the resolution of... Resolution dated today in the packet.
And I would second that.
Steve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is our board secretary, Claudia Savelos. We have a resolution approving her as board secretary again. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Eve's second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Okay, that's that one. Okay. I guess we got through that pretty quickly. Okay. Okay. So the first thing we have on our agenda this evening, approving the minutes of case number Z1919-744, which is 21 Battle Road, Block 3801, Lot 10, in the R1 zone. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the resolution? Are there any questions, comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
I move to second it.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll start the hearings. The first one is... I am looking at the... It's actually 48 to 50 and a half Pine Street, Block 30.02, Lot 100, in the R4 zone. I'm just looking for the case number on the memorandum. The case number... I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's not on the memorandum.
No, it's not. It's on the agenda. So it's case Z1919-749. Oh, I'm sorry, that's wrong. It's case Z1919-788.
Steve, could I just make an announcement in the beginning? Ryan Kennedy, attorney for 437 Ewing Street, had called.
Yeah, I should have said that right.
And I just... He's requesting an extension. They also requested an extension at the December meeting. It was carried here, so they're requesting an extension to the February meeting, and they've given us an extension of time through March.
Yeah, I don't see...
All right, so Derek, just what is the date in February? That way they will not renotice?
February 26.
Okay.
Okay. All right, good. Sorry about that. Okay, back to Pine Street. Okay. Derek, would you like to introduce the case?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Bridge, I'll swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Jonathan Lennon is the owner and Jonathan Lennon and Kate Montgomery are the applicants. They are seeking a D2 use variance to permit the addition of a second story to an existing garage structure, which will be converted to a studio for artwork and exercise use. The existing lot contains three single-family homes, which is a legal nonconforming use as only one principal structure is permitted on a lot. Properties in the R4 zone is subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with 17A, 254, and 258. The definition of lot permits only one primary structure on the zones R1, R2, R3, and R4 in the former borough. The subject property is noncomplying with respect to the required lot area, which is 18,000 square feet. That would be three lots for three houses. The existing is 14,919. Smaller side yard requirement's 12. The existing is 7.9 feet and the combined side yard requirement is 20. Existing is 15.9 feet. The required parking for the three houses, one space for each house, for a total of three spaces. There are two legal spaces on site. Accessory structure setback is five feet and the garage structure in question is two and a half feet setback from the side property line. There's been a variance granted to this property, case number 517-3, in July 1986, and this was when these two lots were contiguous but were not consolidated at that point. So they... It was granted to Lot 69. It contained two single-family dwellings. The variance allowed for an encroachment into the side yard back to permit the construction of a two-story addition. In 1988, the lots were consolidated into a new Lot 100. This was accepted by the former Princeton Borough. The new lot contained three single-family structures. At the time of the consolidation, there was no prohibition against more than one primary structure on a lot. The definition of lot was changed in 2009 to limit it, as I said earlier, only to those art districts in the former borough. The current project is to convert the first floor of the existing garage structure into a studio space, which will contain a powder room, a studio area, which features a counter and a sink. Two dormers are proposed on the second floor, which will increase the height and create a loft space. We'll just go over the variances. The D2 is expansion of a... In this case, it's a legal nonconforming use. The property has three principal structures, three single-family dwellings, and as I've mentioned earlier, only one is permitted. So the expansion of this garage structure is considered an expansion of the nonconforming use. The applicant should provide some explanation of what the studio space will be used for. And as you're aware, no other variance or relief may be granted under the terms of this section unless such variance as other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance you should be concerned about. The applicant should demonstrate special reasons for granting the variance as well as address the negative criteria. The bulk variances in this are generated by the height increase. Within the five-foot accessory structure setback is considered an increase in the degree of noncompliance. It's a slight increase from 15 feet to 16 and a half feet. And the other variances are the setback, increasing that roof, the side yard setback is two and a half feet. So the increasing that roof within that two and a half foot, within the five-foot setback is considered an increase in the degree of noncompliance, as is the increase in the height from 15 to 16 and a half feet. And they've requested both consideration under the C1 and the C2 variance criteria. So if you have any questions about nonconforming lots or, you know, how this property arose, be glad to address them. But it was legally consolidated. The town did accept it, so it is a legal nonconforming use in that it doesn't comply with the standards of today, but it's protected by the former actions and the former legality before the laws changed, so.
Are there any restrictions on parking for the three dwellings?
I mean, I'll let the applicant speak to the parking. Each dwelling should have one parking space. I think you'll hear from the applicants how they live in one unit and rent the other two, and they can speak to how the parking works on the site. But technically, they should be a space for each one. The garage, from looking at the property, it's pretty tough to get back there to use it in a functional garage manner, so. And I would also add that this is in a suggested historic district. The Historic Preservation Commission did look at it, but just administratively because they didn't feel that there was really enough being done to the structure for them to do a formal review, so. That's my overview. If you have any questions, glad to answer.
And board members, I'll just indicate, I should have said this earlier, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application. Now, we're going to swear you in. Is... Are all of you going to testify? All right, why don't you... Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Walker, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so thanks for taking the time to meet with us. This is a super unique property and it's one of the reasons why we fell in love with it.
Is your microphone?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we purchased this property in the summer of 2018. It was previously owned by the Bradford family, who had gone through the process of consolidating all of these lots. We purchased the home and sort of made a commitment to the family and the children that we would upkeep the property, the landscape, as well as the park across the street, which is named in honor of the Bradford family. I have some slides and photos because I think it's helpful to orient you on the lot. So this is the structure in... Under discussion, it's, as Derek mentioned, separated... It's not visible from the street and it's completely separated from the parking by a gravel... Or sorry, a stone path. This is a photo of the lot with the back house. We rent out the front two houses and we use the back house for personal use. For all intents and purposes, they're really two lots. 48 Pine has its own parking and 50 Pine Street, which is a yellow house. They are Princeton PhD students, musicians. They don't have a car and we only have one car. So we... The lots are very deep in this part of town, too, so we actually have quite seclusion in the back of the property, so there's a large degree of separation here. Our intention is to essentially store what is a, you know, while not deemed historic, really sort of a beautiful, well-maintained structure that's in need of repair and to bring it to a place where it's essentially unusable for us today beyond outdoor storage. There's no front door and I can talk a little bit about some of the challenges that that brings, but we would like to bring it up to a place where it's not in disrepair and also keep in the architectural integrity of the property as well as the existing structure and do so respectfully to our neighbors who we've had good communication with. So those are kind of the main points. I'll say, important thing to note is that, as I said, it was a former garage. It's no longer connected to a driveway and really, there's actually a gate. So here's another view of the structure from the front. As you can see, a major issue is the roof is in decline. The siding is starting to leak as well as have holes and it's sort of structurally unstable. We've had a structural engineer look at it and it's really in need of repair. This is the view from the front, back to the front houses. So you can see sort of from our view, it's sort of in our... This structure is sort of in our front yard in many ways and we'd like to put it into a space that is usable. One of the challenges with having it be this open structure is that it has become a habitat for animals. I was able to capture this photo last... This summer, there's quite a number of... I think since I've been able to figure this out, but a friendly raccoon, our animal tenant. So this has kind of created a dilemma for us because it's this structure that was formerly a garage, but now it's not and it's really only used for outdoor storage. There's no door on it, so we're thinking, how do we use this but bring it up to something that, you know, that we can actually use as owners? And so our intention here is to turn it into a space that we can use as a studio for quiet. It's intended to be an area for us to be quiet and relax, be alone. We'd like to use part of it as a study and a reading space and it's another part for exercise. I practice yoga. I go practice meditation. It's really intended to be a space for quiet. One of the challenges with our back house, actually, the house that we have is it's... The way the Bradford family had constructed it, it was really never intended to be sort of a family house. It was sort of a retreat for the previous owner after a tragic accident had happened. And so the house is extremely loud. It's a spiral staircase in the center. You can hear everything that happens from one side of the house to the other side of the house. And so we're really looking for a space that can just be quiet and separate. And frankly, you know, in order for us to justify the investment in really repairing this structure to something that will be usable, we'd really like to make it something that we can use. And we'd like to do all this in keeping with the design and integrity of the structure. This entire property was really designed around this structure. Our plan is to have no change to total and previous coverage, no change to FAR, no change to the existing footprint in the structure, no change to any of the architectural or landscape. And really, this is not visible from the road. The only neighbor who can see it is at 54 Pine Street to our left and we have, you know, been in contact with them. So, yeah, I spoke a lot, but any questions?
Ms. Montgomery, why don't we label it... We'll call this Exhibit A1, your entire set of slides.
Sure, yeah. And this is as... I have... We have some drawings here as how we're privated in the plans.
Anything else or are you done?
No, that was mine.
You're done?
Happy to answer questions.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, if you have any.
Mr. Walker, just before you begin, you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have been for 30 years and president of town for 25.
All right, and you're the project architect? And does the board want to accept Mr. Walker then as an expert in architecture?
Oh, I mean, I think we'll accept you as a...
Okay. Very good.
I guess the one thing in approaching this that came up was, you know, right now there, as you can see from the picture, it's just kind of a storage space. And so if you're effectively going to use it as a kind of a retreat and escape, exercise and those kind of functions, you still have to deal with the issue of storage. So as the structure stands now, there's approximately 900 cubic feet of storage above and it's not... I mean, there's beams and some plywood above, if you want to call that loft. By adding the 18 inches and putting the dormers on, and again, the dormers really relate to the existing house now, it doubles the number of square feet available for storage, but it's still at the peak, at the ridge. You've only got seven foot five... Or sorry, seven foot six. And so there's no... Actually, I think it's a little bit less than that. That's right, 7'2". And of course, with the low slope, as you go away from the ridge, you know, and start approaching where the roof meets the wall, it's just less and less effective as a storage space. So that's... That was really the motivation for trying to gain an extra 18 inches to truly make it effective storage. And it's actually only under half the area. You can kind of see a dashed line. It's really... The loft consumes half of that space and the other is essentially double-height space.
Is that it?
Yeah, unless there's questions. I just... I thought just to cover that, simply because that was kind of, you know, what's going on architecturally in terms of something more substantial. Everything else will essentially remain as is.
I have a couple of questions. Is it going to be... Are you going to build on the existing slab or do you build a new slab?
It's not actually an existing slab. If you look at the picture, you can see it's essentially a raised wooden floor, as it were. And the engineer, I don't know if you're familiar with Jim Huffman, he does a lot of residential work, and he felt that the foundation itself was compromised in some areas. So I suspect it's possible that we can repair those areas, but that ultimately it would mean pouring a new slab.
Does the... Does it have a code-compliant foundation? A lot of these... I've seen a lot of older garages in this area that go down eight inches, so...
Right. And we haven't... We haven't fully explored. I mean, you know, we need to excavate to confirm. The engineer felt it probably wouldn't be down to frost level, which... And again, that kind of ties into the deterioration, which happens when, you know, you've got disintegrating foundations, you know, your... The plates that the frame sits on can get compromised. So it's really addressing all those issues within that exact same footprint.
But... So there's a possibility you may take it down?
Not really thinking necessarily taking it down as much as potentially lifting it up and putting the foundation.
Putting a foundation beneath the existing garage?
Yes.
Okay. That's a little tricky.
It is, but people that do it, it's very common. I mean, you know, there are examples of huge Victorian houses, you know, being driven down highways because somebody wants to move them. In this case, a garage, not particularly challenging, just as a task for those that are familiar.
We've had others come before the board most recently, recently last year, where they were going to move the garage and just felt that when they really looked into it, it was impractical to do that. I mean, I'm just... I'm not saying you can't do it. It's just it may end up being a new structure.
Not out of the question. You know, the existing frame seems to be in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Probably the inclination would be to stick with the 2x4 construction, so if there are areas where things are compromised, it's possible that we'd have to double up some of the framing. I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't think it's necessarily 16 inches on center, which if it was new, that would be the inclination. You can get away with 24 on center for your framing, but I think we'd address that at the time, I think.
Is it going to be heated?
Yes, that... I'm pretty sure. I mean, we... I think we talked about...
Yes, our plan is to...
Heating and air conditioning would all be internal or would you be putting structures out around it?
So currently, the... It's not so that the... You can't really see it here, but the heating and air... Well, the air conditioning for our current house is not far from there. It's sort of on the side of the building, so I would, you know, one idea is to just have it be right where the air conditioning for the existing structure is.
Yeah, there's like... I think there's one or two condensers almost right up against the house right now, so whether those would be adequate to... So, whether those would be adequate to deal with this, or it would mean potentially adding another, I think that would be another to be determined, as far as I know.
I have another question. Are you going to rent this out, or are you going to use it?
That's a great question. I'm glad you said that. We have no intention to rent this out, and it's a good question because we, you know, rent out the front two houses.
The reason I ask that, it pretty much looks to me like you have a full bathroom and a kitchen. Now, I know the drawing show, a toilet, a sink, and a changing area. It looks like that could be easily finished into a full bathroom.
Right.
And then the, excuse me, let me finish, and then the kitchen itself, it has a sink, but again, in an area, it just, to me, again, don't take this the wrong way, but it looks like it could be a rental unit.
Yeah. I mean, we have no plans to rent it out.
Okay.
John, you can swear in. We'll have John swear.
Raise your hand, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, yes. No, we have no intention to use it for anything other than personal use. It's just the structure of the house is, it's very open, it's nice as a sanctuary, but it's super loud.
I can understand.
We just want to be able to have some separate space, and that's all we really intend to do.
So, the half bath will remain a half bath, it won't be a full bath, and there'll be no cooking in there, no provisions for cooking?
There's...
So, it won't be, it won't be an apartment?
No.
Okay.
There's, this is not being built to be a dwelling unit.
Okay, all right.
Would you accept the condition? I mean, you would need additional approval to make it a dwelling unit, but...
Yeah, I mean, this is something that we, you know, have discussed.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't know where you're contemplating for conditions, but I think, given that from square one, they had expressed to me what the intended use was, and it had nothing to do with, so if it's, if there's some kind of conditions that need to be put on, just as a, you know, precautionary or whatever, I don't think anybody would be opposed.
Okay, all right.
No, and, yeah, I understand, we are not going to be the only owners of this property.
No, I understand, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Do you have anything else that you want to have us consider?
No.
Okay. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none. We'll go into executive session. Any comments from any board members? Somebody want to make a motion?
Board members, just one question. The applicant, I guess they didn't exactly address the variances, so in your executive discussion now, whoever makes a motion, it would be helpful if you would also indicate, you know, why you think it meets the criteria now, because they need the technical expansion of a non-conforming use, and then they need a couple of bulk variances as well.
I tend to agree, the reason I didn't make a motion is because neither the positives or negatives were spoken to. I don't know if you're prepared, if you've read that section of what's yours, yeah, you kind of didn't tell us how it meets the requirements under the C2, how it's not a detriment. That's kind of your responsibility to us.
Right. I mean, my main argument is this is not viewable from the road. There's really only one neighbor who has, you know, any visibility to this. So, in terms of, you know, impact to public good, and our intention here is to really improve a structure that is in need of repair and is really going to be going in a, you know, downward decline direction, so really hoping that it would support. I have my Municipal Land Use Law Act here. Sorry. Right, the purposes of zoning, which Derek has provided me, really to, you know, promote a desirable visual environment through creative techniques and good civic design arrangement, and really not having any real impact on the community beyond, you know, rehabbing a structure that is part of the history of this property and part of the sort of architectural design of the space. So...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you spoken with your neighbor about the proposed project, and what was your neighbor's thoughts on it?
Yeah, we have spoken with them, we've spoken with all the neighbors. Pine Street is actually a really great street, we have block party, and we all know each other, it's a pretty great community. They actually are, 54 neighbor who is most, you know, we share the lot with, we spoke with him yesterday, and he said he was, I have an email from him saying he was quite liked the design, and his only concern was about any vents, and we said that, you know, would be hap, any venting would be facing our property, and he said otherwise, he was fine with it. So, we've had pretty positive feedback, and we know all the neighbors on the street.
I do have one more question now that I think about. What about the parking concerns? You've basically got two cars.
Yeah.
And you said you didn't have a car.
Yeah. So, we don't, I mean, from our perspective, doing this changes nothing to the parking situation, because it's not adding any parking here, it's intended for...
I don't know, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you're using it for your own use, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
But from a practical standpoint...
Yeah.
If you, because I believe, is there overnight parking on Pine if you don't have a driveway? Can you get permit parking on Pine?
If you don't have a driveway, there is overnight parking, but they, this house has two driveways, so I don't think they would get an overnight permit.
They would not qualify for a spot, right.
When I spoke to them about it, and I'll let them speak, they were looking to address the problem by controlling the rental of the front units. They testified they had PhD students from Princeton there that didn't have cars. I mean, I, you know, obviously, the board has to think about it, the variance runs with the land, but that's the testimony they made.
Yeah, no, that's true.
It's one of the great things about Princeton and being in the borough is that there's a lot of, you don't need a vehicle, but also, there's two spots there, and you can fit two cars easily. So, if there were someone with a car, you could have them, but it works out, I mean...
Yeah, you can actually fit three spots pretty easily. It's a pretty, you know, decently long driveway, but I said, we have one car, and our tenants use bicycle and walk.
Okay.
Would, oh, sorry. Would anything be triggered if it's, they decide to sell it in three years in terms of the parking being down one spot, or is that, it would just...
We'd, yeah.
Would they have to, would they have to do something about it?
No, I mean, no, there's no, they could sell a unit today if they condominiumized it, and there's no requirement for parking, it's just non-compliant in existing situations.
I'd like to move that we accept this, but I'm not sure how to phrase the negative and positives.
I can probably take a crack at that.
Go ahead.
So, I would move to approve this as a C2 variance on the basis that the design promotes a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design, and the applicants carried its burden in demonstrating that this would not sufficiently or provide a substantial detriment to the public good, just based on the feedback they received from their neighbors.
Good.
And is there, is, does the board want to impose a condition with respect to rental as a dwelling unit?
Yeah, I would, okay, go ahead.
But would that condition only apply to this owner, or does it... No, that would, no, that would go with the property.
No, that would run with the land, because this variance will benefit any future owner and restrict any future owner.
So, the motion is stated with that limitation and restriction.
And tell me how you're stating that.
So, it's basically a motion to approve the C2 variance on the, you know, for the positive and negative criteria, stipulated with the limitation that the use of this renovated garage structure will not be used for residential purposes or rental purposes.
Yeah.
Board members, just one more variance, though, there's the D2 variance, because this is considered an expansion of a non-conforming use, because right now, although it's a legal non-conforming use, the current ordinances would not allow all these dwellings on one property. So, by converting the garage now to a studio, the zoning officer has determined that that's an expansion of that use. So, again, that is a D variance, so we're looking at, are there special reasons? I think Mr. Valvanes saw, you know, just moved that he feels it would promote desirable visual environment, and you're imposing a condition that it cannot be used as a dwelling unit.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, that the half bath does not get finished into a full bath, and there's no provision for cooking in the kitchen area.
Okay. All right, so we'll consider that motion amended then to include the D2 variance. Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for assisting me with the release.
Okay, our next case is 23 Linden Lane, case number Z1919-781. It's located on Block 3303, Lot 95, in the R4 Zone. Is there anybody here to represent that? Okay.
Board members, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Jonathan Liebowitz is the owner and applicant for 23 Linden Lane. He's seeking variance approval to permit the construction of a steeper pitched roof. Unfortunately, his whole roof was in the front yard setback, using the prevailing front yard setback, so any increase in height of the roof requires a technical variance. He's requesting C1 and C2 relief. Property is located in the R4 Zone and subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Section 17A, 254 and 255. Property is non-compliant with respect to the front yard setback, the requirement is 19.66 feet, the existing is 13.3 feet. It's also not complying with impervious coverage, requirement's 49 and 1/2, and the existing is 59.6 feet. The applicant seeks to remove the existing fiberglass single roof and install a new standing seam metal roof for aesthetic purposes, and I think also drainage. The new roof will increase the pitch of the roof, be raised up approximately 20 inches where it meets the house. As I stated earlier, the entire front porch is within that front yard setback, so any increase in that requires a variance. He's requested both C1 and C2. The Historic Preservation Commission did review this application, and they didn't really have any issues with it. There were some going concerned about the height, but they did not feel it was a big deal, and they didn't have any conditions or negative comments. So, those are my overview of the memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Liebowitz, we need to swear you in.
Sure.
If you raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my case. Relatively straightforward, I believe. Like to add a standing seam metal roof to the existing porch. The house is, I believe, probably over 100 years, maybe about 100 years old, and the, as Mr. Bridger said, the existing setback is currently violated by the house, which probably existed before the setback rules were in place. The roof doesn't necessarily leak per se in any central parts of the roof. The material that's on the roof now needs to be replaced, and we had consulted a roofer who told us that the drainage would be much improved if we installed a standing seam metal roof. And in addition, we thought the aesthetics of that would be preferable to us and consistent as the Historic Preservation Commission also reviewed, consistent with the neighborhood. So, the pitch of the roof extends up, I guess, about 20 inches, more than where it's going to be now, but certainly not higher than the second floor. So, that's really the case.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions from any of the board members? Okay. You have anything else? That's it?
I think that's it.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none. Okay. Any comments from any of the board members, and if not, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, same with the last one. I don't see any detriment, I think it does meet criteria set forth, or most of them in the C2, and there's no detriment to zoning and the negative cell. I make a motion approval of a C2.
Second?
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. You're welcome. Okay. Our next case is Z1919-786, 132 Patton Avenue, Block 5306, Lot 18, in the R2 Zone.
I'm recused from this one, Steve.
Board members, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
The applicants Kathleen Vosler and John Sullivan, the owners of 132 Patton Avenue, are seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit additions to an existing home in exception to the required front yard setback. An additional parking variance is required due to the conversion of the garage to living space. They are seeking C1 and C2 variances. Properties located in the former borough in the R2 Zone and are subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 17A, 239, and 240. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. Project description, the applicant is proposing to remove an existing covered front porch and replace it with a 784 square foot, two-story addition on the front facade of the house. A one-story, 240-square-foot addition is proposed for the rear facade of the house, and this addition will convert the existing garage to living space. Front yard setback variance, the two-story front yard addition is partially located within the front yard setback. The required setback is 47.9, the proposed is 45.3 feet. Variance is required. There's a parking variance as the conversion of the existing one-car garage increases the existing degree of non-compliant, compliance regarding the two required parking spaces. The site only has one parking space, a variance... A variance is required as a proposed parking in the driveway does not comply with a required 25-foot setback. The required setback's 25, the proposed is 17 feet. And the applicant has requested consideration both under the C1 and the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thanks.
Just could you clarify that for me, the setback? Does that mean that as far as the parking?
The parking should be setback 25 feet and they're going to be setback 17 feet instead of that, where the garage is now, so.
Is that whether or not there's a garage? Is that just maybe in part how long the driveway is? Does the driveway count as parking?
If the driveway meant the 25-foot setback, it would count as parking. So I think it's due to the conversion of the garage. Hold on a second. It looks like they can, there's one space in the garage now and there's one space in front of it. They can actually fit two spaces in front of the garage, but they would tag into that setback, and I mean the 25 feet, so.
You have to be sworn in and make your presentation.
Gentlemen, could you first state your names for the record, please?
I'm John Sullivan.
You're the applicant, sir, and?
I'm Jason Vicco, architect.
And Mr. Vicco, the plans that were submitted are from George Fet?
Correct.
Are you working with him?
Yes.
Okay. And if you would both raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
I do.
Thank you.
So would you like me to just kind of generally describe it?
Yeah, your application was a little hard to read, so.
Yeah.
And it got cut off when we got the.
The, um, the house is a little confusing because the front door actually goes out onto Markham Road, and so the front of the property is Patton Avenue, but to us, it's the side porch. So my wife and I have lived there a little more than 20 years. When we bought the house, it was fine because it was just us, and when the kids were small, it was also fine. But they've gotten older. It's a three-bedroom, but it's a small third bedroom, so we're really getting crowded. And so we basically wanted to convert the screen porch that we have now into two bedrooms on the top to give more space for us and the kids. The existing kitchen is really small and we'd like to expand that a little bit. We also wanted to see if we could get a full bath on the first floor because, excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in public, but my parents are getting older and there is a possibility they may be having to come and stay with us at some point, so we wanted to have a first-floor bathroom to accommodate them, and we wanted to have something we could use as a bedroom also on the first floor. Also, my wife Kathleen and I, you know, we intend to stay in the property for a while, so we eventually also maybe wanted to use the first-floor bath, so that was the reason we wanted to do the expansion. Jason can handle any of the.
Technical questions.
But, you know, right now, the house itself is quite small. My son's bedroom is basically enough for a bed and a dresser, so we wanted to expand that. The existing garage is really small. We mainly use that for storage, and we park two cars in front of it. So I do know that we're asking for variance for the parking, but the parking really is not going to change very much. We're going to leave the cars, you know, where we always leave them. You know, and I think we've asked Jason to, you know, do the renovations so it kind of keeps the character of the house. It's kind of a colonial, it's going to maintain that look. It's going to generally be the same shape except for the garage space that's now used for storage. We're going to be converting that into, that's going to be the bathroom and a little bit of the kitchen. And the thing right now that's the screened-in porch is going to be, you know, a possible bedroom on the first floor and then more bedroom space on the second floor.
So, I mean, from the details of the project, there's like Sean was saying, there's the sunroom.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry.
Jen, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, ma'am.
And could you spell your last name?
V-I-C-O.
Thank you.
I mean, pretty much the details of the project is we have the screen porch, which is becoming a sunroom on the first floor, and currently there's two bedrooms, well, one bedroom above it, and we're going to put two bedrooms above and turn currently the existing bedroom into a laundry loft. The whole driving force for why we encroach on the setback is to get the new bedrooms to standard to be able to have furniture and be able to move in. I mean, we're only over the setback two and a half feet, and that kind of, that's the driving force is to make sure the bedrooms aren't just closets with a bed in them. The kitchen renovation is interior. That doesn't affect any of the setbacks or coverages. The existing garage that we're converting into a sunroom is all designed within the existing coverages, and that has the bedroom or the bathroom in the back. And the existing garage is strong enough that it's really tough to pull a car into. Like, you get your car in, but I don't know if you're going to get out.
Anything else you want to add?
I mean, as far as positive and negative impact, the negative I would only say would be that we're encroaching on the prevailing front yard setback. The positive is, you know, it goes in line to design with the neighborhood fabric of the colonial houses in the area, so it's not going to, it's not a contemporary house. It's going to stand out or anything like that. It's going to blend in with the fabric of the neighborhood.
If I, I could also add, I don't know if it goes to the rules of the zoning board, but the thing that we really like about the neighborhood is that it tends to be a place where people come and they stay, you know, they raise the family. Most of our neighbors have been there either as long as we have been there or longer. I think we've been there 23 years. We intend to be there, you know, another 20 years. And I think the thing with this house was it was great when we bought it. It was built, Jason could tell you, but I think in the '30s, and it's, you know, it's a '30s house. It was designed for the size they had then. You know, the kitchen is, you know, great, we've used it, but, you know, the rule is if somebody's cooking, there is only one person allowed in the kitchen. If you want to open the oven, if you want to open a counter near the oven, you got to open the oven door first, and then you can open the counters because otherwise they'd bang into the oven. If you want to turn on a light to the garage, you got to roll out the refrigerator and flick it up. I mean, it just, it's smaller than I think people would want a family house to be right now. And so if you want the neighborhood to stay as it is, where it's families that stay and raise their kids, I think this is making it a house that people would do that in now as opposed to a house that, you know, people would have done it in, you know, 80 or 90 years ago.
And I also just want to note real quick, sorry, there's not even really any basement square footage to capture for extra living space. Only a third of the existing footprint is basement, the rest is crossways and slab.
Could you, could one of you read the last two lines at the bottom of this page? Because it's a little hard to read in the bottom. The last line is cut off.
Put a hand right there.
Unless anybody here wants to hear the whole thing, but those are the two I can't really read.
My wife was the driving force in the project. She's unfortunately working tonight, so let me just see what.
Yep, you do what I did.
Oh, so I think this is, it's actually cut off on this too, but I can read the end of it. It says, "We have difficulty using stairs." And so this is talking about, you know, if we have somebody who is either an elderly relative who is staying with us, and I want to be honest, we don't have any, you know, I'm not expecting this anytime in the near future, it's just something that's a consideration. And also Kathleen points out, my wife, that we do want to stay here, so at some point it's pretty likely that either she or I is going to, our stairs are fairly steep, and as we get older, we're wondering whether that's something we want to be going up and down a lot, and so a priority for her was to try and get a full bathroom on the first floor so that if we needed to use that in the future, we could do that. And I think that's what this says, "Have difficulty using stairs." That's what she's talking about.
Okay. All right.
So nobody has the original?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Yeah. No, there's an original. Eve? Yep.
I mean, I guess that's, I guess that's the gist of it. I was just trying to read the. Okay, so the last line says, "Will be able to use as we age and have difficulty using stairs."
Yeah.
That's what you said.
Very logical.
Thanks.
I have two questions. Did you consider possibly moving, since you don't have a garage anymore and you didn't use it anyway, moving the parking to the side of the house so it's out of the setback?
You mean kind of going north into the side yard?
I guess, just relocating the driveway so you can park a little further back alongside the house rather than parking in the setback.
There's an existing garden and trellis and.
I'm sorry?
There's an existing garden with the trellis and everything there. That's why if you look at the floor plan, that converted space.
Mm-hmm.
There's two sliders on that side that'll go out into the garden area.
Okay.
Well, so I, I mean, I honestly, I didn't think of it, but I thought that would be more intrusive on the neighbors. Because right now, the cars, we don't use the garage as a garage. I don't think anybody in our neighborhood uses the garage as a garage. So the cars are, you know, we just leave them in the driveway, at the end of the driveway, and I think if we just keep doing that, that'll be, you know, easier for the neighbors than if we try to relocate the driveway.
Okay. And, okay, I can understand that. My second question is, did you consider making the front room two and a half feet narrower so as not to require a setback variance?
So it's right now a, like a screened-in porch, and I'm trying to picture it in my, it's, you know, it's the, it's toward the Patton Avenue side, and we have a small, like, outdoor table and chairs right now in there. And to sit at, you know, to get around that table is really hard. It's a, it's a really narrow room. And so I think we want to, if, you know, Jason could talk about the technical things, but I think we thought if we could get another, you know, I don't know what the, it's like six or eight inches, it would just give you enough space so you could walk around it as opposed to right now where you're kind of squeezing around it.
There's also an existing wood-burning fireplace with a chimney that runs up through there, which makes things a little difficult, too.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't build the addition, I'm saying just make it a little narrower, that's all.
I think if we, if we, I remember when I laid it out, if I narrow it down to within the setback, that back bedroom is, because there's that little access hallway that chews into that back bedroom to gain access to it. If I make that narrower inside the setback, it's under, I think it's under 10 feet, things like nine foot four, nine, nine foot.
I saw it, it, what's the, there are two different dimensions on here. On the one side, you've got 14 feet that goes to something that doesn't look like the end of the house, and then at the back, you've got 15, right?
That's 15 and 4, right? Whoops. The setback, the dimension behind the bathroom is 15, the width of the room is 15 foot 4?
Well, that's the, I think that's the other side.
That's including the closet.
I'm sorry?
That 15, 4 includes the closet.
Well, it's the whole, it's the.
Correct.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the other side of the house.
The side?
The first floor, the first floor addition.
The north side, yeah, okay. The one that is where the garage is.
Jason to the kitchen.
Right.
Okay, so the other side, so now come down a little bit on your drawing.
Well, I don't think we encroached on the left side at all.
You do. I think you do, don't you?
We straddled it.
That's the Patton Avenue side.
That's the front, yes.
That's the front side, that's the, toward Patton. It's, the house is, it's confusing because that, so we're talking about the Patton Avenue side is the two-story, that right now is.
Oh, I got it turned around, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. It's, it's because the front door goes out on Markham.
Yeah, so that's the exist, that's fine. Okay. My mistake. I didn't take that drawing reading class. Okay. Okay.
I have a question about the parking setback. Would, would it be possible to comply with the setback if you were coming off the Patton side, or would that not, not work?
I'm sorry, say.
If you're coming off of the Patton side.
So like down here? Could we comply with parking?
Yeah, if you had your curb, your cut driveway there. Yes, there's more room.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the legal answer, but again, we were trying to, I'm trying to think of the neighbors because the existing driveway is on Markham, and I thought if we put in, we'd have to put a curb cut in, and then we put a whole new driveway in, we'd really like change the block, I think, a lot by putting a new driveway. I think the neighbors, I'd have to talk to the neighbors on Patton right next to us, but right now it's a, basically a, almost a single front lawn that goes down his yard and then kind of run on the corner, so it's like a one big grassy area. So if we were putting a driveway up across that area, you know, to divide the lots, I don't know that, I mean, I don't want to speak for, speak for them, but I don't think they would be, I don't think they would think that was a great idea, although, you know, they would have to speak to that themselves. That's also where our utilities run, so I don't know, again, I don't know if PSE and G would be okay with that, because that's where the gas and the electric come into the house.
I just want to clarify, the comment was to put the driveway off of Patton Ave?
Yeah, that was my question. Would, would a driveway off of Patton Ave comply with the parking setback?
I mean, it would, it would, it would change the whole layout of the house, because then you have to walk around to the Markham side to go in the front, front entrance.
Yeah, and I just, I would be, I would, I would worry about the neighbors, what they would, what they would think. And also, I think humanity moved the, I mean, the gas line goes in there and the electric line, because that goes right up that part of the property.
You'd have to come back fairly far with it to get it close to the house.
And are we considering the Markham side a front yard?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
It is, yeah.
We are, we are considering it a front yard.
Right now is off Patton. I mean, in the borough, you can basically, you can have either one as our front yard. But in terms of the totality of variances, if the front yard's on Markham, then the 35 rear yard setback, most of the house would be within that. So they've tried to utilize the existing, I mean, it has been patent forever, but, you know, if somebody wanted to come in, they, you have the option in the borough, it's just how many variances you create by determining one front yard or the other. So, but this was the least variance-prone path to.
The only reason I ask is that you already can't move the side yard driveway. It's not a problem.
We'd like to do both, but I mean, it speaks about secondary and primary streets and it's not.
I don't think there's a difference here. I mean, they're both not very traveled roads.
Gentlemen, two questions for you. You're testifying from the plans that were included in the application, or is this something different that you have up on the screen?
These are the same, same.
The same?
Mm-hmm.
And second, do either one of you want to speak to the variances? Because as you saw in Mr. Bridger's memo, there are two kinds of bulk variances. One is a C variance, where you say that due to the shape of your lot, the topography, it's going to be a hardship, but he's indicated that the lot complies with all the bulk requirements. There's a second kind of variance, a C2 variance, and in his memo, he notes that there are different purposes of zoning that might be advanced by your application, so that becomes a basis for the board to consider it. So I don't know if you want to take a look at those purposes and perhaps provide some testimony about which ones you think are being advanced by the application.
Well, under the C1 or C2, item C without a doubt, to provide adequate light air and open space.
I, I mean, I could, you know, I'm just, I'm looking at a different list, but I, I think I spoke to this. I think that, you know, I think that the benefit to the community would be, it would be a house that would support the neighborhood, the tradition of having people stay in the neighborhood for a long period of time. It would certainly allow us to stay in the neighborhood longer as we get older, and I think as, you know, you know, eventually, either if our kids take the house, or, you know, when we move on, somebody else uses the house, it would be a modern house that they would tend to stay in longer and raise their own family in, you know, rather than the houses, which is really, it's a nice house, but it's just outdated and small.
And that would go in line with item I, promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangements.
And, and I don't mean to keep going on, but I, I do think we're making an effort, hopefully a successful effort, to be as, you know, non-intrusive to the neighbors as we can. We're trying to maintain the, the way we all, we park right now, we're trying to maintain the, the general footprint of the structure, and we're trying to keep the design generally as it is, so it'll fit into the neighborhood.
Let me, if I could, maybe help you a little further with some leading questions. On your, on your coverage, I believe the maximum allowable is 25. You have a pretty small house, and it looks like your, your house coverage is like 14%. So, it sounds you might be leaving a lot of open space and green space...
Oh, yeah.
...by keeping your cars where they are.
Yeah, and also, we have, I mean, you know, you can't see it from the drawings, but we have the lot, there's a space away from Patton Avenue, which is where the kids played when they were little, but that's all trees, and in the back, you know, away from Markham Road, is where there's a lot of landscaping and gardens. And then, you know, the front, we're not really encroaching into any of the open space we have right now, and, and we don't have any intention to, you know, that's going to stay as it is.
And, other than the parking front yard setback question, do you exceed almost all the other setbacks, meaning you're farther away from your neighbors, and you're not encroaching on them with this little parking variance? Yes?
Yes.
Right, I mean, you know...
Okay. I was just trying to get there. And I, I don't particularly like parking setbacks in general, granting them, even though everybody parks in the setback, but, legalizing it, but you may have some reasons here. Yeah. It's, it's, it's a small house, you've left your neighbors with a lot of open space.
Right, and I think with the parking, I mean, I think the main reason, we just, you know, I think, again, I, I can't speak to the neighbors, but I, we're, the parking, as far as somebody walking by, is not going to change. I mean, the, the cars will remain where they've been for 20 years.
Yeah. See, our problem is, we'd be legalizing.
No, I, I know, I know, it's not, you know...
So, we got to find reasons to do it.
Any other questions?
No, were there any?
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this application? Okay. All right. We'll close the public portion. Any closing, anything else you want to add before we deliberate?
Yeah, I should have said, "Thank you for considering this."
Okay. So, who would like to make a comment, a motion, or whatever? Any other questions?
I, I would move to approve it under the C2.
Can't hear you.
I'd move to approve under C2.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Vavanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, this is the...
Okay. Our ne, our next application is Z1919-791, 815 Mount Lucas Road, Block 1001, Lot 4, in the OR-1 zone.
Board members, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Good evening. Shavane Patel is the owner of 815 Mount Lucas Road. He's seeking a D1 variance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling in a zone where such use is not permitted. Additional, additional bulk variances are requested and required. Subject property is located in the OR1 zone, which is an office research zone. It's subject to the used-in-bulk regulations in the former township of Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246. This zone permits office research uses, and it does not permit single-family dwellings. The subject lot is not complying with respect to the required lot area, which is 217,800 square feet. The existing lot is 43,273. The lot width requirement's 330, existing is 296.58. Lot depth is also 330, existing's 158. Lot frontage on Mount Lucas is 165, required, 122, 15.59, existing. And the subject property itself is respect, not complying with respect to the 60-foot right-side yard setback, the existing is 53.6. The rear yard setback requirement's 60, the existing's 22.3. The side yard setback, the shed is 60, and the existing is 39 feet. And then, the rear yard setback for the shed as well, again, it's 60, and it's 23 feet. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-story, single-family dwelling and construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling in its place. Proposed home will feature three bedrooms, a living room, dining room, area and three and a half baths, a front and rear covered porches, and an attached two-car garage. The project requires a D1 use variance and several bulk variances. The subject property, as I stated, is located in that office research zone, and this does not permit single-family dwellings. Use variances required pursuant to NJSA 40,55, D-70D1. All the lots on this section of Mount Lucas are, are single-family dwellings, and they're all in the OR zone. It's very unlikely that anything other than single-family homes would be built there. And I'm not sure why this area is, is OR1, but to limit a lot depth is difficult to, to comport with the OR zone. So, the applicant should address special reasons to grant this. As you're aware, you need five affirmative votes. You should also address the negative criteria, and the property has numerous bulk variances. They requested C1 hardship for the bulk variance. The first is a lot area that requires, I think, five, five-acre zone, and it's short of an acre, 43, 273. Requires lot width of 330 square feet, 330 feet, the existing's 296.58. Same with lot depth, requirement's 330, existing's 150. The frontage on Mount Lucas is 330, and existing's 122.59 is what, what's existing. The side yard setback requirement's 60, proposed is 43, and the rear yard setback proposal's 48.7. And they've requested C1 consideration under that for these bulk variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them. Thank you.
The large lot area requirement has to do with...
Yeah, I mean, this zone is, is the zone that Bun Drive is on, so there's a lot of, you know, medical office buildings and larger office buildings. Church and Dwight is back there, the Defense, the old Defense analysis is back there, there's a large church back there, so it envisions larger land.
That's why it was set up that way, though, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, we have to review it based on the existing zone. Steve?
Mr. Stein has a question.
Oh, wait, one second. Did you want to say anything more?
Yeah, I have a question for, for Mr. Bridger. Was there a variance granted to build the original single-family?
I could not find the records for that.
So, there may have been, but we don't know if...
I'm assuming, I don't know if it preexisted the, the overlay of the OR zone or, or not, so, I'm not sure.
But had there been one, then they would have stayed with the land?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, but it would be a different house than, than is there now. So, you'd have to get additional relief for, for this, even if there was a variance granted. I mean, obviously, that variance would relate to a single-story house that's there now with, with the setbacks that are there now, so they would need new relief for the house that they're building now.
Thanks.
Would you like us to proceed?
Would you like to start?
All right. My name is Vinay Mavencur, and I represent the applicant. I have with me James Kyle from Kyle &amp; McManus, who is the planner and is going to be the principal person that offers testimony for, in support of this application. So, at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to James and let him proceed.
Mr. Kyle, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And do you want to qualify Mr. Kyle as an expert?
Certainly. Mr. Kyle, can you speak to the board about your background and qualifications in the field of professional planning?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning Design, which I received from Rutgers in 1996, have been a practicing planner for well over 20 years, represent a number of boards such as this. Our firm currently represents over 20 municipalities on their, and I've, I've been here many times.
You've been here before.
I'm a licensed professional planner, PP, and I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
I would think that...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues associated with this application. Been to the site, reviewed the master plan, zoning ordinance, reviewed Mr. Bridger's memo, also prepared a couple of exhibits that are going to be shown on this PowerPoint presentation that we have here. And the property that we're discussing tonight is Block 10.01, Lot 4, it's 815 Mount Lucas Road. Presently, let me just go to, and I, I have a copy of this on, I'll give this to Claudette when I'm done. So, this is the most recent aerial photograph in the tax parcel base map. You can see the parcel outlined in yellow, roughly in the middle of the map. So, this is at the intersection immediately across from where Harrentown Road hits Mount Lucas Road. To Mr. Bridger's point, you can see all of Mount Lucas Road to our north, which is up in this photograph, are all single-family homes. Also, to our south, and then to our east, there's another single-family home, and other single-family homes in the area. If you've followed anything that's going out the planning board, you know that Landwin owns the property to the east of these lots. They currently have a subdivision application. I don't remember if it's been decided yet or not, but part of that application, it's a cluster subdivision, would preserve about 75% of that tract. All the preserved area would be immediately behind where these single-family homes are. This next slide is a 2015 aerial, and I wanted to show this to you because it's a leaf-off image, and it shows the location of the dwelling that was formerly there. That dwelling has been demolished, so right now, it's just kind of a hole where the foundation, everything has been removed from the site. This shows you the, where the dwelling was situated, and you can roughly see there's a stream that runs right through the middle of this property and kind of bisects it. There's a bridge that crosses that I can show you in a subsequent photo. You can see that stream kind of goes off to the northeast, and then continues down to the south and wraps around behind the assisted living, which is that large building on Lot 3 there in Block 2802. So, this is a photo that I took this morning from Mount Lucas Road. This shows you the driveway, you can see the bridge that goes over the stream that bisects the property, and you can see the dwelling that's off to our east in the back of that photo. These are some drone photos that I took as well. A little hard with the trees, it kind of, everything kind of blends together here, but you can see the existing dwellings that surround our location. You can see the former location of the dwelling where that excavation was. This is just an oblique view of, from the west side of the property, looking back to the east, and you can see that dwelling kind of tucked in the woods there behind us. So, this is the plot plan that was submitted with the application. The proposal here is to basically put a new dwelling where the one-story frame dwelling was. The footprint of this dwelling that we're proposing is smaller than the footprint that was there previously. There'll be a new driveway constructed to that gravel road, which you saw. That's actually the right-of-way for Harrentown Road, it just was never connected, so that right-of-way does exist, so that driveway would be off of that location. This is a, this will be a two-story frame dwelling. It's, living area is 2,372 square feet, but if you take, under the definition, municipality's definition of FAR, the total floor area is about 2,0978. So, the first floor of this will contain a kitchen and family room, living room that has an alcove, there's a breakfast nook pantry, mudroom, and then there's also a half-bath, and then the garage, and as Mr. Bridger noted, there are front and rear covered porches. And the second story will contain all the bedrooms, so it's three bedrooms, all with en suite bath. And then, there's a laundry room on the second floor as well, and I'll run through the floor plans. But as I said, the, the proposal here that you see on the plot plan is, is to roughly locate this structure pretty much where the other one was. The other improvements that are there, the shed, some of those other improvements that Mr. Bridger mentioned, those are going to remain and be untouched. We do require D1 variance for this. The zoning district, as was noted, really only permits office and research. There are some of these districts in the municipality that do still permit single-family dwellings, but this is not one of them. And if you look, if you've seen the zoning map, this section of the OR1 is a little strange because it, it kind of stretches up... Just go back to the arrow. It stretches up from these properties to the south, so the assisted living that you see there on, on 28023 is in the OR, and these single-family dwellings that run along the east side of Mount Lucas Road is kind of a finger of that OR district that goes up and, and reaches up to the north. The Landwin property to our east is located in the R-A district, which is a single-family district, and I think it's an S district that's across the street from us, and that's the Penn Medicine Facility there across the street. So, it is, as Mr. Bridger pointed out, it is a bit of an anomaly, but I think these dwellings have been there for quite some time. So, just reviewing the architectural plans quickly, this is Plan Sheet 2 in your set. This is the foundation plan, it shows the basement, and then the garage. There will be a foundation port under the front porch. This is the first floor plan, you can see the family room, kitchen, alcove, and the other living space, which is connected to the garage, and then there's a mudroom that comes in, and the half-bath there right off the porch. The second floor plan, you see the three bedrooms, all with... Uh, the second floor plan, you see the three bedrooms, all with en suite bath, and then there's, the bedroom one has a walk-in closet. And then just reviewing the elevations, uh, this is horizontal siding. There's also some shake, um, that will be on there as well. There's some cultured stone on the front of it. You can see it's a two-car garage, so there will be sufficient parking for the residential use. Uh, on Sheet Five there, you're seeing the front of the structure, so you can see that front porch, uh, these kind of gable roof features. And then this is Architectural Plan Sheet Six, just showing the right side and rear elevations. You can see that covered porch on the rear as well. And then I, this is kind of a blow-up of that rendering that's included in the architectural plan, so this gives you a better idea of the materials, the horizontal siding. You can see the shake up in those, um, kind of gable roof features and then the, the covered front porch and then the driveway. So just addressing, uh, first, the use variance, the D1 use variance that's required, I think, uh, there are... The positive criteria in this case can be met. Um, first off, by the fact that the public welfare is promoted because the site's particularly suited to the proposed use. Uh, this is a small lot in and amongst other small lots that had a residential home on it. And it's also, as, as Mr. Bridger pointed out, it's a lot that likely cannot be developed for permitted use in the OR district. I think, as was pointed out, the lot depth that we have here is about a third of what's required for the OR district. I think that coupled with the stream that kind of runs along all these properties really makes it impractical, uh, from that perspective, to build a, a permitted office or research use. Um, so I think the fact largely that it had a single-family dwelling on it previously and, and the location and the, the context of the other single-family homes there makes this site particularly suited for the single-family dwelling that's proposed. I think there's also purposes of zoning that are promoted here. Uh, first and foremost, purpose A, to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Uh, this really provides a better alternative to the office zoning that exists there. Again, based on the size of the lot and the context of the other existing single-family dwellings that we have there. And it helps, uh, better preserve that residential character that we have on that east side of Mount Lucas. So as, again, if you go back to the aerial photo, you can see this, that side of the road is just lined with, with single-family dwellings. Also, purpose G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Uh, I think given the specific limitations of the zone and also the environmental features that we have here, the stream, and all those factors, that this is more appropriate for the residential use that's proposed. Um, and it's a, a better alternative really to the OR zoning that's in place. So that's, I think, an important consideration because it's a more appropriate location for a single-family dwelling than for an office building or a research use, which likely couldn't be constructed on the parcel anyway. So I think for those reasons, we can meet the positive criteria. In terms of any negative, um, as I said, essentially, we're replacing the structure, albeit with a two-story structure, the one-story structure that was there. I don't expect that the impact will change. Um, we're respecting the, the previous footprint of that structure, and we're actually reducing the building coverage versus what was there on the single-story structure. Um, and all the surrounding uses, as I said, on this side of Mount Lucas Road are all residential in nature. So if you look at the aerial photograph, on all sides, we're surrounded by residential uses. So I think, uh, it's unlikely that there'll be any substantial impact to those surrounding properties from another residential use in this location. In terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan, um, as the board has heard many times, on a D1 variance, we're required to demonstrate the enhanced quality of proof under Medici v. BPR. And that's a demonstration that the variance is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And essentially, we have to reconcile the fact that this is not listed among the permitted uses in the OR zone. So I, I think here, we need to focus really on this property in particular, um, given the limited utility for permitted uses based on the lot configuration. I think that's an important consideration. Um, you know, particularly on the enhanced quality of proof and the reconciliation. Excuse me. There's no specific purpose statement for the OR district in the ordinance. Um, there is discussion in the master plan, though, about this district, um, and the resident, the non-residential districts in general. There are purposes listed in the ordinance, though, and they generally mirror the purposes of the municipal land use law. There were a couple of additions, um, I think one of which is important here, and that's to protect the environment and promote sustainability, especially wooded areas and the tree canopy for the purposes of flood control, soil erosion prevention, energy conservation, wildlife preservation, and aesthetics. So I think the current proposal really responds better, in particular, to that purpose of, of the zoning ordinance. Um, you know, when you think about the fact that we're maintaining the existing disturbed area, we're not taking any trees down. Um, we're not really getting any closer to the surrounding properties. So I think this kind of responds better to that purpose in, in the ordinance. The reexamination report in 2017 also discussed, um, non-residential uses, and it included a statement that reads, "Given reduced demand for office space, especially in outlying areas, consideration should be given to identifying alternative sites and evaluating the appropriateness of other land use designations in the ordinances." This is one of those areas in particular that I think this statement was aimed at. And I'd even thought I heard at some point the planning board was talking about looking at the zoning in this area in particular.
I'm sure they will.
Okay. So this kind of also responds to that, um, notion in the reexamination report. And, you know, really, as I said, when you look at the utility of OR1 uses for these parcels in particular, it's not likely that we're ever going to see anything like that developed on this side. First of all, you'd have to assemble a lot of property, but second of all, it's just not enough depth really to have any meaningful construction in accordance with the zoning. So I think that overall, this proposal responds to the purposes of the ordinance. It also responds to some of the items talked about in the reexamination report. I think most importantly here, um, the grant of a variance for, really for the continuation of single-family use on the lot won't impact the ability to develop permitted uses on any of the surrounding properties. And I think that's important. It won't upset the balance of the zone plan essentially. So I think based on all that, we can say that it's not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And as far as any reconciliation, um, I think that what I would point to is that, again, we had long had a residential dwelling on this site. Um, it continues the fabric of residential uses on that east side of Mount Lucas Road and, and leaves that intact and helps promote that and, and protect it. It also provides, again, redevelopment of the site with a use where we likely won't see a permitted use developed on a property like this. It's just not really viable. Uh, and I, as I said, I think it also provides better response to protection of the stream corridor and forest resources that we have in the area. If you remember on the aerial, this is kind of a larger forested area on the ridge that, um, you know, will remain protected because we're not removing any trees with this proposal. So I think for all those reasons, we can meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the D1. As far as the bulk variances, um, I think these can be just addressed en masse. I think it's very difficult in situations like this to apply zoning standards for, uh, a district that clearly envisioned office and research uses, has a minimum lot area of about five acres that's required, and we only have about, just shy of an acre. It's about .99 of an acre. Very difficult to apply those bulk standards to a single-family, non-permitted use in this district. So I think that coupled with the fact that we have, um, the stream running through the middle of the property kind of creates some practical difficulties. So it's, um, a unique situation in that we have an existing residential lot in an OR1 district that's one-fifth of the required lot size. So it's almost impossible to meet those bulk standards. And we don't really have flexibility to position the structure really anywhere else in the lot because of the constraints with the stream corridor. We, we have to respect that 50-foot buffer that's required, uh, as part of the ordinance, and we're doing that under this proposal. So I think we can meet the positive criteria on a hardship basis, on a C1 basis. And then in terms of any impact to the surrounding properties, um, as I said, we are respecting that building envelope that was there previously. We're even bringing it in a little bit, so I think it'll have less of an impact on the setback issues with the neighbors. So I would expect that this won't have any substantial impact on the surrounding properties. And as far as the intent and purpose of any of those setback standards, um, I think that we're meeting them. We've kind of proportionally adjusted really for the lot size. Um, if you look at, and, and, um, Princeton Junction Engineering provided just for reference, the R5 standards on there, which is a, a lot size that's comparable, um, to what we have. And essentially, we comply with those. Provided just for information, but I think it shows that proportionally, we've kind of adjusted those setbacks, um, I'll say correctly, to address that. And I think we've positioned the building where it won't have any impact. So I think we're meeting the intent of providing adequate separation to the surrounding uses and lots, and there won't be any substantial impairment to that intent. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Mr. Kyle, do you want to mark all these collectively as Exhibit A1?
Yes, that's fine. And I'll, I'll give Claudia a copy of the presentation. Uh, I have a PDF of it. I can email it or I can... Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. Well, it has not happened. Presumably, somebody could start building research and office buildings in the other lots. Is that correct?
Um, I would say it's unlikely, and the reason I'll say that, and let me just go to the parcel map and I'll, I'll show you why I think that. So as I said, r- really, it's just those lots on the east side of Mount Lucas. So all those residential dwellings that are there are what is part of the OR. And then everything kind of to our south, um, kind of south of Harrentown and including Poor Farm Road. You, you couldn't really put together enough land here. Even if you took all those residential uses and put them all in one lot and tried to build an office research use there, you're not going to have enough width, or I'm sorry, depth in the lot to really build a meaningful structure or to have any parking areas or anything like that. So I think it's unlikely that these residential uses could be converted to anything like that. And as I said, the, the land that you see to our east, that large forested area on, um, Lot Two, that's all in the RA, R-A zone. And it's, it's proposed to be developed, but even still, it, it's a residential zone that, you know, acknowledges the environmental sensitivity of the area. So it's, it's, I think it's pretty unlikely that you could physically develop a use like that on this or any of these lots.
Okay. This may be a question for Mr. Bridger or our attorney. And that is, if this sort of variance is granted, then presumably that might serve as a precedent for any of the other similarly situated properties to the north on Mount Lucas. Is that correct?
Well, we don't know if those other lots did get variances. Mr. Bridger couldn't locate the variance for this property, and, um, as he noted, it may have predated anyway, the OR zoning. But, uh, yes, I think it would be difficult for the board to deny a D1 to surrounding lots, where they'd come in, uh, with a tear-down and say now they would like to, you know, get a similar approval. Because they would advance, I assume, the same reasons.
Thank you.
Derek, is that a, a single lot behind this property? And all the rest of it, then one major, large lot?
The one that's to my right, I guess, to...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, uh, a two-story house. So I'm not sure when it was built, but the larger lot behind there is the subject of, uh, a large subdivision, uh, cluster application that's been ongoing almost a year now, so...
But it's one lot.
It's one... I think it's...
Actually, I think the Landwin is a couple lots. I think it's...
Two lots, three?
Lots one, one, two, and three, I think, is...
Yes.
Is all.
I'm used to seeing the whole...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't include the whole thing.
It actually goes, it's three lots. It actually goes to the right of, as you look at Poor Farm Road, is the boundary, and it, it goes up against Harrentown Lane, the houses that are back on Harrentown Lane.
And is that new construction behind you?
That, my client informs me that that house was built in 2004. Okay, thank you.
Since this isn't residential to begin with, I'm just curious if this lot could be subdivided? Or do we have any...
Minimum lot requirement was 330-foot lot frontage. And this is a fifth of that size, so...
Well...
It would be very difficult to subdivide it, um, given that, that criteria. Plus, the stream that bisects the lot in half has a 50-foot riparian buffer zone, which would further restrict development in there. So I, I think anything's possible if you throw enough money, but it would be highly, you know, unlikely, yeah.
I just wondered, I just wondered about that. If, if that would come, might conceivably come before us in the future. And it, with the stream there, I, I wondered, and, um, so...
I mean, I, I, I think with the current OR zone, it would be, it would be difficult to, that's just my guess, to, to grant a subdivision.
Any other questions? Let's go to the public portion of the meeting. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion and go into executive session. I guess before we do that, we should say, do you want to say anything in closing, or are you pretty much done?
No, I don't think so. Unless our attorney has any comments, I don't, I think we've presented our case.
All right. Let's go into executive session. Comments from the board? Any con, anybody want to make a, a, a motion?
I move, we accept the proposal under D1.
And?
C1.
Yes.
D1 and C1?
Yes.
I'm particularly like the fact that it's being built on these, on a footprint that's existing. So I, I applaud what you're trying to do there.
Second?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No, we have a, we have a closed session. No, no, no. We'll, we'll, actually, it's an open session. It's a year. He's testified before this. This is a tough lot. It's a very tough lot.
Yeah. Yeah, half of it's not really used.
Yeah.
And so that part of Harrentown is almost like a...
Can we get the bailiff to clear the courtroom? Hey Derek, can we get the bailiff to clear the courtroom? Do you need the door closed? I'll get it. We have two things to do now. The first is the, uh, Zoning Board of Adjustment Annual Report. It's in your packet. The second part, which Claudia has highlighted effectively, is, uh, our recommendation to the council. But it does summarize what we did this past year. Uh, no, I didn't write it. I think Derek, Derek, did you prepare this? Did you write this?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay. All right. All right. Does anybody have any questions on it? So what do we do? We make a motion for adoption of this? First of all, we want...
I just have one correction.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, de minimis in SubD, yeah. I meant SubC, sorry.
Okay.
Does anybody want to discuss the recommendations to the planning board, to the council? Or is that seem reasonable? Or should we add something to it?
We probably should add some things to it, but we haven't really had...
Yeah.
...any time to talk about it. I mean, I'm sure we have...
The important thing is the consolidated ordinance. I mean, that's critical right now, yeah.
Which I'm happy to say, we are meeting weekly to address that, to the definitions, which is the foundation. And then we've hired a consultant, Dan Dobremilsky, who was the planner for the Sunrise application. And he's compiled a chart that takes all the two town zones and puts it on a zoning chart, which will be helpful. So, you know, we're plotting through it, which is good. I would hope that we get done this year. I mean, I looked at stuff through here. We were kind of all over last year on different cases. I didn't see trends, but if you guys saw them, I mean, please feel free to discuss them. I think the biggest thing is just to get one book where everything is in one book. And, you know, this guy was like looking at a parking code that is no longer valid, so, you know, the former, the third case with the house on Patton, so... This would all just make it a little easier for everyone, and clearer, and smoother, so...
I have an unrelated question. This says we looked at 42 variance applications. Do you have any idea how many building permits were issued in, for the year?
Like 900?
Further? And only 31 of them needed variance, or 41, 42 of them needed a variance? Okay. How many, 900?
I mean, that's everything from a sign to a new building to a, you know, finished basement, so...
How many do you think you headed off?
What's that?
How many do you think you helped so that they didn't need to come here? Or does that happen a lot?
It's hard to say. I mean, I talk to so many people. You try to direct them away from a variance, and, you know, people who've been through the process understand that, and they take my advice, and sometimes, you know, other people go on. But, I mean, we try to reduce the stuff, you know, and the same, and I appreciate you guys bringing out, why are we granting variances? I mean, I try to get it through the applicant's psyche that, you know, you got to look at, if it's a C1, what are your reasons, and C2, and not everyone uses an attorney, but, you know, that, I'm glad you guys helped the applicants. And I'll try to get them to, the people that don't have attorneys, you know, to focus in a little bit more on that, so...
I think, I think we should add a line that at least thanks the staff for the work of supporting the zoning board. Isn't that part of the annual, shouldn't that be part of the annual report?
I appreciate that. I mean, it, it's not necessary, you know? I mean, it's just, the boards, the council and the planning board are looking to see what trends they need to address, but I appreciate the comment.
How is this, how do these numbers compare to the previous calendar year?
We've been around 40 applications a year, I think, last year. I don't know, Claudia, were we at 48? I think there was a few more last year, so... I mean, I would hope that some of the neighborhood character stuff, it makes some of the stuff go away, like the air conditioning stuff. We had mentioned that several times, several years, about reducing the setbacks for air conditioning, so that's, that's been done, and that's been good. You know, it's eliminated, you know, probably five or six cases a year, or it eliminates people putting air conditioners in on Saturdays without permits, and, you know, so...
So how do we do this? Do we do this as just a, an individual vote? If we adopt it, how do we vote on it?
I think a motion would be fine in a second, and then you can just take a voice vote. All in favor?
Fine. Somebody like to make a motion to adopt this?
Some moved and submitted to mayor and council.
Second? Somebody want to second it?
Sure, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
You can do it all in favor of this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And now, I guess we will go into, we need a resolution to go into closed session.
Yeah, there is a resolution in your package.
Yeah.
So if, we need someone to move that and second it, and I think a voice vote would be okay to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation 23 Lee LLC. It's actually versus both the zoning board and the municipality as well.
So, does somebody want to make a motion to go into closed session?
Some moved.
I'll second it.
Do we have just all in favor? Do we...
All in favor, that's fine.
I see that was all in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye, okay.
So, what do we have? It has focused in great, as we expected, the applicant, the zoning board, and the body, the elections, and the hearing, which is the last one, the highlights, the position that we discussed, and...